The February 14, 2023 session of the Anarona County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. At this moment, we will hear Bill Number 323. Mr. Barron.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
323, I have Kelly Kenny and Lynn Miller joining me. 323 makes changes to the county zoning requirements under Article 18 to allow religious facilities as a permitted use within small business zoning districts. The background on this bill is it's related to an ongoing capital improvement project to improve vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian access to Jessup Elementary School. As part of the project, the county needs to obtain a portion of land adjacent to the current roadway. A church is currently built on that property. As part of the acquisition of the church property, the county intends to exchange the property for a parcel of county-owned land across the street where a new church can be constructed. Everybody's happy with this deal. However, the county-owned property is zoned for small business development, which, under current county law, would preclude it from having a religious facility constructed on it. Changes in 323 would relieve the county property of these restrictions and allow the construction of a new church. Additionally, it came up in looking at this that prohibiting the construction of a church within the small business zoning district may amount to a violation of the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. So amending our code would ensure compliance with federal law and shield us from any potential liability. Ms. Miller and from OPC and Ms. Kenny are here for any questions. I have had conversations with Councilwoman Fiedler about potential amendments, and I think we'll discuss those at the appropriate time.
I guess I got one question. When it comes to, not that I'm against this, when it comes to these small area plans that are, or there are teams or committees that are in place, are they also looking holistically at future legislation that, like, for example, these sort of zoning code changes when it comes to our general development plan? Are we also looking into that for these types of issues as well? Are these like one-offs that we wouldn't catch during a normal small area plan or general development plan when it comes to utilization of those spaces?
So the Office of Planning and Zoning and our, currently, we have three regions out, three stakeholder advisory committees. They are looking at all sorts of issues. I wish I could say that these one-off issues would stop. I don't think we'll ever be able to catch every issue that comes. But I know Lynn Miller at Planning and Zoning has a list of code fixes that she wants. So there are, there are a number of pieces of the code that, as we are going through the, the general development plan, may come up, but they also are coming from a different direction because, you know, these issues crop up all over the place. And Office of Planning and Zoning does go through our code regularly, and there are places, as, you know, the code has been built on top of each other, that there are inconsistencies or language changes that may be coming. So while I wish I could say the administration won't be bringing forward one-off bills like this, sometimes these unique situations pop up.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you on Bill Number 323? Next, we'll review Bill Number 423.
Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs. And before I start, I just have to say the councilwoman from District Four has excellent clothing taste today.
Oh, wow.
So I'm here to present Bill 423, which makes supplementary appropriations to the Board of Education totaling just over 19 million from various sources that were unanticipated during the formulation of the budget. Here with me at the table today are Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office, excuse me, Matt Stansky and Melissa Kamala from the Board of Ed, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So these appropriations use different grant funds as well as investment revenues, and we can answer any questions. The items are outlined in the fiscal note that you all have, and we're here to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. I just have one question. What is the source of our investment income?
For the record, Matt Stansky, Acting Chief Operating Officer, so it is the interest we get from cash in the bank. So as interest rates have gone up, we are seeing an increase in interest income, one of the few benefits of rising interest rates.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In Section 2 on the bill, it talks about that there is a $1.46 million transfer from the pupil transportation account. So I guess maybe just, can you share what that's about? Obviously, that triggers my interest, anything with transportation, just in light of this troubles that we've been having.
So these grant funds that we're asking, that we're asking for appropriation today are funds that are being used to fund our summer school transportation. And so when we built the budget, we, we put an estimate in for what we thought it would cost. It's coming in a little bit less. Some of that is due to the lack of drivers, but for the most part, it is due to our ability to kind of consolidate routes in the summertime. We're able to reduce those appropriations.
I do have a questions on page, I guess Exhibit 2. So when you look at instructional salaries and wages, so that 270K that is, is being transferred, what, what's the intent behind those resources? Like, what will you use those resources for?
So those, the transfer of 270,000 was specifically, again, for our summer program. So we're reducing that line item and moving it into our supply line, supply line item to, to ensure that we have enough supplies for our summer program. But we, we recognize that we had enough in the salary line to cover all the stipend costs for our summer school teachers. And so we're able to use that excess to, to put it into the supply line.
So what about the mid-level? Because that's about five times larger. What is that for?
Give me one second.
And I'm assuming the teachers are paid out of the instructional salaries in wages category?
Correct, yep.
And the administrators are paid out of the mid-level?
Correct.
This is my assumption, okay?
Yep. So these are, these are temporary stipends to support our virtual academy. They are salaries also for our resident teacher certification program manager out of our Maryland Leeds grant. So those are the primarily the two, the two big ones in the salary line. We're also engaging a consultant to review all of our curriculum, so that is also going to be paid for out of Esser grant, and that is in the mid-level line as well.
All right. I was just pointing out from an optics standpoint, I guess, if someone's looking at this from the public, they see administrators, you know, higher headquarters, including Line One with the 399, and yet instructional salaries, you got 270. So from an optics standpoint, it looks like, you know, teachers are not getting, you know, the benefit of additional resources that we have to be placed within that category, which pays them, but yet we see sort of significant increases in the mid-level administrator. It just, from an optics standpoint, it just stands out. And I wanted to point that out, that's all.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So I did want to follow up on one part of this. I see that some of the federal funds are the Esser funds. How much does the county still have in Esser funds in the school system, either from the second round or the third round, it looks like?
So we, we have, so round one is completely spent. So that was all spent. Round two, we are 70% spent, and those need to be obligated by September 30 of 2023. So we feel like we're on pace for that. Round three, Esser three, we're about 35% spent at the moment, and we have until 9:30 2024 to spend those funds.
Okay. And off of those percentages, what's the dollar figure that you received? So I guess, how much have you spent and how much is left?
Right. So we'll start Esser three, we were awarded $148 million, so, you know, 35% of that. Esser two was a $48 million grant award, and so we have, so we'll have about 15.
70% of that.
Yeah, 70% of that remaining. And then Esser one was, I think, 11.8 million, and again, all those have been expended.
Okay. So all in, a little over 200?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. The larger line item in Exhibit 2 is the other instructional costs. Could you go into, you know, just some bullet points on what those costs are?
Sure, yep. So we have about, you know, all in about $4.6 million. So this is for enhanced learning field trips, behavioral health interventions, our Bright Space platform, including learning management system support. We're doing interventions for early childhood with community-based partners, and also providing with community-based partners summer learning opportunities for students. So this would be, we are engaged with County Rec and Parks, Maryland Hall, Chesapeake Arts Center to, to provide summer programs. And so those others, that's how we pay for the students to go to those programs in the summertime is through, through that line item. And those are, those are the, the big, big ones. And I also, I'll point out, too, we've expanded our mental health services through private therapy sessions for students who can't afford to seek the mental health services that they need. And so it's, again, through our Esser funding and our behavior, our federal behavioral health grants. And then finally, I'll say we are partnering with private providers for additional tutoring services as well.
Thank you.
Any additional question?
I have one more follow-up. Thank you. So I'm sure that you guys are looking at this because you're always forward-looking. But with the Esser funds, obviously, those are one-time funds that you've got, but you've filled a lot of needs with those funds. How do you anticipate on a recurring basis, when the Esser funds are exhausted, continuing to provide those services through the school system's existing budget? Like, what's the plan for that?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Volkey. So we are annually now, through our budget process, we are reviewing the Esser items that, through data, we deem, we, like, if, if the program's been successful, we'd like to eventually transfer those funds over into the operating budget. You'll see when we present you our operating budget in, in the springtime, you'll see a section called Esser Funding Cliff, and these are items that we deem that we felt, through data, that have been valuable for students, and so would like to request funding to move those items into the general fund. There are some in these grants that are truly one-time that we won't ask for, and we'll just, we'll just go away once the grant expires. There you go.
All right. Any additional questions? See none. Thank you for 423. Next, we'll review Bill Number 523.
All right. So Hannah Dyer, again, Director of Fiscal Affairs with the County Executive's Office. Ms. Kenny and Mr. Teroux are staying with me at the table, and I'm joined by the Department of Health as well. So Bill 523 makes supplementary appropriations from unanticipated grant revenues totaling just over 500,000. Most of these funds are directed to programs within the Health Department, and there's also 75,000 directed to the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families Emergency Food and Shelter Program. Like the last bill, this bill does not include any general fund appropriations. Bill 523 also makes an appropriation to the Cattail Creek in Upper Macatee River Waterway Improvement District totaling $5,500, and this appropriation utilizes existing funds from the district to make a loan payment. So with that, we're here to answer any questions you may have on this bill.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm looking at Exhibit 1 and what appears to be the summary of the appropriations. On that list, there's $145,833 going to tobacco, diabetes, and chronic disease prevention and management, maybe it's sort of cut off, gun violence intervention. What is it you anticipate doing with that funding for those different programs? Because it looks like it's two things in one is how that line item tees up. So what is the breakdown of that 145? How much of it is going to tobacco, diabetes, and chronic disease prevention, and how much is the gun violence intervention for, task force or intervention programs?
So those, those are two separate items. The tobacco, diabetes, and chronic disease is 145, 833, and then the gun violence intervention is the 184.
Sorry, I misread that. Okay, now I see that.
I thought it was the.
Got it.
I had your perception as well, so.
So then, I guess, rephrasing the question, what do you see that you all intend to do with the 184 for, for the gun violence intervention team?
So the 184 for is for a, a nonprofit organization that sets up a gun violence prevention unit.
This consists of bringing on a coordinator and also working with trusted community partners who will use sort of a public health intervention outreach to have outreach workers in the community to try to interrupt gun violence. And they, we have worked previously with the Cure Violence Approach, which is a, a violence-public-health-intervention methodology and applies evidence-based public health epidemic reversal strategies to detect and interrupt violent situations, to identify and change the thinking and behavior of the highest transmitters, which are those participating in violence, and then change group norms that support and perpetuate the use of violence.
You go ahead, Rocken.
Yeah.
It's up to you. You're the chair.
No, no. Mr. Volkey, go ahead and finish your, because you brought it up.
Thank you. So with that specifically, who are we paying? You're hiring a coordinator, and are you contracting with an outside group who then is going to hire these individuals?
Correct.
So we're just paying them?
Yes. So we would, we find community partners traditionally nonprofits. It's similar to, if you're familiar with the Community Health Ambassador Program, which we engaged with during COVID.
Okay.
But they're using this in other cities for gun violence specifically. So it's getting into the grants to community nonprofits who then hire sort of trusted youth many times in the community, and there's training provided, and there's an assessment done on, on the results of it. But it's based on outreach basically in the community.
So how much, sorry to cut you off. Yep. Did you have more?
Yep.
Okay. So how much of it is a coordinator position, and how much of it is the actual contract? And in that, is the coordinator an FTE that you're going to have in health, or is this another contract position?
This is another contract position.
Okay. So how much is the coordinator and how much is the contract to these outside groups?
Ooh, wait, hold on a second. I do actually have that. Contractual services is, I believe, 70,000, 85,000, and then the coordinator is, coordinators and staff leaders salary in there is about 60,000, too. There is 12,000 in supplies.
Okay. I was going to say.
Yeah, there's 12,000.
I wasn't following your math yet.
And, 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 excuse me, FICA and some health benefits included also.
Got you. So do, so the all-in package for the contractual coordinator person, somewhere around 80,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the other contract piece, somewhere around 85, and then the balance is supplies?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll have more, but I think, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pickert.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually quite interested in the different violence intervention interrupter programs that are around the country. I've done my own cursory research, and I'm excited to see Anorondal County move in this direction. We know that gun violence and violence in general is, it's traumatic in our communities, not just for the individual people engaged in the criminal activity, but it gets legs and, and it impacts our, our youth and our communities being safe and thriving, and it all the way into our school system. So I'm, I think this is an interesting, it's, gun violence interrupters programs have been around since the 90s and into the 2000s. They're under-resourced and, under-researched, but I think it's something we have to do in our communities and start looking at violence in, in this way. So I appreciate this grant, and I look forward to following how we, how we utilize it in the county. So thank you.
I got a question. So the gun violence task force that the county executive put on, put together last term, was, do you know if this was part of the, one of the sort of outputs of that process where we wanted to enhance and create this type of program? Do you know if, if there's a connection between the gun violence task force that we had previously and then, and then this particular activity?
Yes. I believe it was members of the task force then identified this opportunity for the grant.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Volkey, did you still have a? Any other questions on 523? All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Next, we'll hear Bill Number 623. Ms. Robby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am so excited to finally get this bill introduced. It's something I've been working on a really, really long time. So I'm excited to answer your questions and just tell you a little bit about it. The county currently does have a law that allows accessory dwelling units, but it allows them under very, very narrow conditions. And the idea here is to expand the conditions under which a property owner may build an ADU. And basically, we have all different kinds. You could have a kind that is a garage conversion. You could have an above-garage conversion. Someone recently told me they could be called Fonzie flats because the Fonz apparently live in an accessory dwelling unit, in addition to granny pods, in-law suites, and, and the like. You can have separate accessory dwelling units, which is not currently allowed under our, allowed under our law, but will be under the, the current bill. There are still some limitations. If it is outside of the principal dwelling, so basically, you talk about a principal dwelling and a secondary dwelling, and the, a secondary dwelling that is detached would be up to 800 square feet. Lots of different things to, one of the things, we're trying to take away some of the other barriers, too. So the, the, this bill does not require a parking space for an accessory dwelling unit, does not require impact fees. And really, you know, I think while those things might on their face sound concerning, the reality is that even once you open all the doors to allow accessory dwelling units in the most broad way, they're still very slow to be built. I mean, it is a pretty significant investment for a property owner to, you know, spend anywhere, I mean, depending on what you get and how you configure it, you know, could be anywhere from $10,000 to $100,000. So even on the $10,000 end, that can be a pretty significant investment. So this is a, an addition to our affordable housing stock, but it is a very small, this is no silver bullet. It is just one piece in the, in the toolkit of affordable housing, multi-general, generational housing and aging in place. And, you know, who wouldn't want to have the Fonz as their neighbor? So I can take questions and.
I was just going to say, for the record, I certainly want to be added as a co-sponsor to the, to the legislation. Am a favor of the whole aging in place and having a, a process so that if you're, you know, a caregiver of, of your family, or your mother, or your father, or some other elder care, to have that ability to, or enhance someone's individual opportunity to, to, to do this, I think is, is very helpful. So yes, I would be honored to be a co-sponsor on this one. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I actually add one last little thought you reminded me of? These are also very helpful to people with disabilities and veterans that can provide housing where other family members can be nearby. So any situation where you might have a family member, or like you said, a caregiver, but maybe wanting to have just a little extra space, you know, not in the bedroom next door, but in the, you know, in the space nearby, you really open up a lot of opportunities with accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joining me at the table is Ms. Miller and Mr. Merkara from OPC and IMP respectively, and Kelly Kenny from Office of Laws with us. So I want to thank the, the sponsor. We appreciate the ongoing discussion. I think sponsor noted this was a lot of work to get this bill where it is. County expert staff helped, and sponsor worked closely with the administration to, to work out the technicals of this. I think we would echo the, the sponsor's comments here. This is not a silver bullet. It's another tool in, in other jurisdictions where we, where they have increased the availability of ADUs. You do not see them sprouting up at every house, but they become a nice addition to the housing stock to meet those needs that were discussed, right? Younger folks, aging in place, folks who need care nearby from a family member. So the administration supports this, understand there are a couple of amendments coming, happy to continue to provide guidance as we discuss.
Awesome. Any additional questions?
If it's all right, I would love, oh, actually, I'll, I'll let council member, my better, go first.
All right. Thank you. I just had a couple of questions and would love to hear the answer on the record for the sake of transparency. When I noticed in the bill that there is, obviously, there's the, the size of the structure is specifically limited, but there is not, is there any limit, whether it be in this bill or in existing county code, that would limit the size of the lot on which the ADU could be constructed? And what other type of zoning limitations might there be as far as, like, setbacks from the neighbor's property and that sort of thing?
Hi, Lynn Miller with Planning and Zoning. This bill does not include a lot specification, so there's no minimum or maximum lot size, which is, is fairly common in these types of ordinances that we've seen around. And as far as setbacks, the governing setbacks for accessory structures that are in the code by zoning district now would govern for a detached ADU, and then an ADU within that principal residence would be subject to the principal residence setbacks.
Thank you.
If it's, if it's all right with Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a little time to discuss some of the amendments that we can expect to come down the pike.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So one of the, and I've, you know, these amendments have been generated from feedback from the community, including some that are very knowledgeable about ADUs and how ADU laws have played out in other places. And, you know, not being an expert, although I feel like I'm learning a lot, I've learned a lot about accessory dwelling units at this point. One of the amendments that I plan on bringing is removing the owner-occupied requirement. I've learned from both individual anecdotal stories, but also folks that study ADUs and how they, you know, how their implementation goes, that having an owner, an owner-occupied requirement actually limits the, the development of ADUs. And actually, I believe the council received a, a very specific piece of testimony from a homeowner that had an ADU that ultimately sold it because of a limitation like that. So that is one of the amendments that will be coming forward. And then I believe one of my colleagues has amendments as well, if there are any questions about that one, or if we'd like to discuss some of the others.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're good. You're good. So I do have a couple amendments, and I appreciate, I circulated them, and they are not, they're for discussion purposes, right? And I think that's obviously the purpose of a work session, is let's talk it through. There may be good ideas, there may be bad ideas. But in reviewing the bill initially, I had some concerns, and so I circulated these, and I want to thank the sponsor for getting back to me and providing some feedback on why certain things were or were not included in the bill. The first potential amendment that I had put forward would have removed the removal of the parking requirement. So effectively, it would have kept the parking requirement in place. And I understand from the sponsor that that has been a problem in other places. It's inhibited the growth of ADUs. The concern that I have, and I'll just sort of say this because it's in my mind, I hear about parking problems all the time in my district. I have people fighting, you know, whether or no parking signs should be in. I have people fighting, you know, whether no parking sign should be in place. I have problems where there are communities and the garages are allegedly considered parking spots in the way that the county code currently is written. And so now there has to be street parking because nobody really parks in the garage, it's too small. I have this particularly with townhomes in some of the newer developments in my community. I have some single-family homes in another part of my community, or in my district where the roads are too narrow, by the way that they were permitted by the county. And again, nothing nefarious happened, this is just how the code is written. But you can only park on one side. So these folks don't have parking in their garage that they can really use, they don't have a whole lot of driveway parking, and then they were sold by the developer that they could park on both sides of the street, and now all of a sudden, they're only allowed one because the fire department came in and said, "We have to have a side of the street open, otherwise we can't get trucks through." So, I get really nervous about anything that says, "We're going to decrease parking requirements," especially when we are entirely removing the lot size restrictions, meaning that for some of these communities that already have parking problems, that now you're going to be able to exacerbate those by putting these accessory dwelling units in the backyard or inside the house, and theoretically, you're now having at least another car because that person there may actually now have a vehicle of their own. So that's a concern that I have. I don't know if there's a way to mitigate that, and maybe what I've drafted is the wrong way to go about it, but that's my overarching concern. So I don't know if there's anything that Planning and Zoning can offer in terms of feedback for that, on how we can make sure that we are not creating more parking problems by trying to do something good, but then having a negative impact on the backside.
Ms. Pickard?
Since we don't limit the number of cars a homeowner can have, we might, it's sort of, I think it's moot. I know currently, we have two cars, because we have an 18-year-old that refuses to learn how to drive. But eventually, we'll probably have an additional car or two down the road, unless they all move out, which is, you know, good too. But I know in my neighborhood, there are, I have a couple with no children in the house, and they have four cars. But no one's telling them they can't have four cars.
Did you, Mr. Volkey?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond a little bit. I mean, I definitely think that it is an understandable concern, but I think the, again, the rate at which ADUs are built is so slow that if that does become a problem, it's one that we really don't need to, like, let's, let's open the doors first, and then if we need to rein things back in, we can rein things back in. But the development of ADUs is usually so incredibly slow that parking really isn't an issue. And one of the sort of philosophies that I took overall in, in the drafting of this bill, and by the way, I really should thank Kelly Kenny, who, when I say I drafted it, I mean, I asked Kelly Kenny to draft what I wanted in the bill, and she was extremely responsive throughout the process, so thank you. But one of the philosophies that I adopted throughout the drafting process was to be consistent with how we treat, say, an addition to a house, an extra bedroom, or other accessory structures on a lot, such as a garage or a shed, that we wouldn't necessarily require parking. So I feel like those two things combined, I certainly understand it is on, it is a topic on folks' minds. And again, I'm in a household with, well, the adult children are gone and we have more cars than people, which is a little embarrassing, but you know, my husband likes cars, so we have them. But it's the same idea, that we don't really put limits in other places, so we wouldn't want to add a limit here in something, in a place where we're identifying a pretty significant need. So, I appreciate the, I appreciate the conversation.
Yes, I have to echo Ms. Pickard. At my house, someday, hopefully, they'll all have their licenses, and we will have seven cars at our house. But I do hope by that time, some will have moved out. But in the meantime, our neighbors will have to get used to that, to have on there. But also, I think one concern that was raised, because it's a concern in my neighborhood too, is in townhouses, ADUs can't be added to the townhouses where often that's somewhere where the parking is tightest, so that wouldn't be as much of an issue there. But I do agree that, you know, I certainly don't want to be limited, because I do want mine to have cars and move, and be able to go on their own, so putting limits on there. But I totally understand the frustration. I think we all get a lot of parking complaints in our communities at times to have that, but thank you.
So just to, I guess, follow up. Do we know what the original intent was for why there is this parking requirement with ADUs? Like whatever originally put this in the code? And if you don't know it right now, maybe we can get that, I'm just curious.
We could probably do a little bit of research. I don't, I don't know. Lynn's saying it's been that way since she can remember, and if Lynn can't remember...
Be nice, Mr. Barron, be nice. Come on.
I can certainly look at the legislative history just to see if I can find anything.
Yeah, if you don't mind doing that, I'd be curious just why it was put in place initially. Like, if we're going to get rid of it, let's understand why they did it, and then maybe we can say, "This doesn't make sense anymore, this isn't a good reason." So, thank you.
Ms. Pickard?
Parking ratios in general, the whole rationale behind parking, not only with, in residential but commercial malls, I have a mall that is probably more parking space than mall. And it was built that way to meet the code. We know parts of the code are antiquated in regards to parking and parking requirements, not just in residential. I would want to put out to my colleagues that as we are the keepers of the code and modernizing the code, this is one step that Councilwoman Rodvian has taken the lead on. It's an important, I think it's an important component to our, our housing policy, which was why I was happy to co-sponsor. But we have a responsibility to, as folks who do the hard work and understand the code and understand housing policy and as well as other policies, to do our homework and be able to articulate that out to the public in a responsible manner. So, this is why we have work sessions, and sometimes, the public is wrong. And we need to be able to educate them on why a policy choice is being made in that direction and be the adults in the room.
Any additional questions?
Not on this one.
He's going to have that soundbite. But Mr. Volkey, go ahead.
All right. The next amendment that I have is, and this is again for discussion purposes, these are all for discussion purposes. The prohibition on mobile homes or manufactured homes. So, maybe this is more of an understanding than a change necessarily, but would the way that this bill is drafted currently prohibit some sort of prefabricated home from being placed on a property? That's, that's what I think of with manufactured home. I understand mobile home, you know, it's got tires and you roll it on. If you took the wheels off, is it no longer? A mobile home, like, what does that look like in terms of practically what people can put on their property? I'm asking this because I think everything that I read about building prefabricated or modular dwellings are generally more efficient, they're built better, you know, they're good. And so I'm not sure why we would preclude those from this legislation if we want to move in that direction. So I, any help you can offer? Sponsor, whoever.
I was, I was actually going to offer to read an email that Ms. Kenny sent to me yesterday about this very topic. Because in response to your, your, you know, possible amendment, I wanted to make sure that I had all the information straight. So, if it's all right with you, I'm going to read this email and then add anything that you feel like you need, or anyone else feels that they need to add. So, a manufactured home is a mobile home. So, under our current code definition, what we, what we're saying here, using the words manufactured home, is a mobile home. So when you're thinking of prefab homes, that's actually not considered a manufactured home. It's considered an industrialized building or modular home. And now I've already gone off script, let me go back to reading. A manufactured home is a mobile home. I think when you refer to prefab homes, you mean the ones that are built off-site and then placed onsite. Those are modular homes or industrialized buildings. They would be allowed under the bill and are subject to county permit and inspection requirements. Mobile homes are not inspected by IMP. They have HUD stickers and are not subject to code requirements. Under the zoning code, they are generally only allowed in mobile home parks unless there is a space license for them. And then, I've got some links I can share if you want. So the idea is to, to not, to limit the prefab homes, because I think you identified all the reasons that they can be great solutions for accessory dwelling units. They can be affordable, efficient, well-built, you know, you can get them delivered quickly, you don't have to, you know, necessarily go through as long as the process if you're building something, you know, with your architect and, you know, a brand-new design. So, I think your concern is covered.
I agree. You can bring your tiny house in, it just can't have wheels.
Someday, we might get there, but we'll, we'll start with the tiny houses first.
All right. That is very helpful, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kenny, for that email too.
No problem.
You want to go to the next one? I got one more, I got one more amendment. Unless anybody has more on that amendment.
Actually, Ms. Pick, Ms. Pick...
Mr. Volkey.
All right. You're on a roll, so go ahead.
All right. So, the last one, and again, this could have been the way that I read the bill and I didn't completely understand it, but I was not 100% clear what the intent was with using the accessory dwelling unit as a potential short-term rental. It seemed to me like you could have, so you originally have it that one of the units has to be owner occupied. I'm going to refer to them as units, right? The main dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit. One of them has to be owner occupied. Then there was some language that they could be used as short-term dwellings, or short-term rentals, excuse me. Where I was confused with this is specifically on this page four, I don't know if everybody else has the amendment, I assume you do, but lines seven through 10, it says, "An accessory dwelling unit may not be used for short-term residential rentals as defined." So it seemed like the ADU can't be the short-term rental. So now you're dictating that the ADU must be the owner occupied piece of this, because then the house would have to be, or the main dwelling unit would have to be the short-term rental. Am I understanding that correctly?
I would say almost.
Okay.
The original, so I'm hoping that this removal of the owner occupied piece will indeed pass. Without it, there's actually a conflict that I didn't catch, and a conflict in the way the law is written. So, if the, the short-term rental would be allowed only if you rented out the entire property...
That's what it was.
The primary house and the accessory dwelling unit. Well, if you're renting out the entire property, but you're also requiring that it be owner occupied, you've got a conflict there. So that's one of the reasons for taking out the owner occupied, is to sort of remove that conflict. And, based on the testimony and the input of organizations and individuals that said this owner occupied piece actually is a limitation that we may not want. Now with respect to short-term rentals in general, I've had conversations with folks knowledgeable about how ADU legislation plays out in other places that lean both directions. One advantage of saying, "We don't want an ADU to be used as a short-term rental," is that presumably, if it's not a short-term rental, it will be used for housing. And really, in my mind, that is the primary goal of accessory dwelling units, is to increase housing stock, whether that's for a relative or, you know, a neighbor that needs a place to live. In reality, that actually may unintentionally be a limit, limiting short-term rentals in ADUs actually may be a limit in creating them. Because you may have someone who's willing to create one for the purpose of a short-term rental, and then say, "Well, I won't create it at all." Whereas that person might create it, operate it as a short-term rental for a while, and then say, "Wow, it's exhausting to have to clean this place and change the sheets four times a week," and say, "I just would rather go, you know, with a, with a long-term renter." So, I'm actually very open to this amendment, and I'm, you know, interested to hear more input from my colleagues and the community on this exact point.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Because there is no restriction or a minimum acreage for a property, where this has been done in other places, as the properties get larger, multi-acres, is there an increase in the square footage associated with larger lot sizes? I don't, I don't know if you have anything to go off of in other areas.
So, if we're talking about a detached ADU, the limit is 800 square feet. I'm trying to remember, maybe you can help me, Ms. Kenny. Did we say that over a certain acreage, you would be allowed to have two? Is that where we fall? I know this was something we discussed and had gone, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, because I should know this as well. No problem. Kelly Kenny, supervising county attorney. I think that was in an earlier version of the bill, but we did end up taking that out. I think we tossed around the idea of allowing more than one ADU if the lot size was larger, but that's not in the, in the current bill. Okay, so the final version, we ended up taking out, like, if you had five acres, you could have a second ADU. Right. But two is going to be the maximum. So if it's a detached, it's, the limit is 800 currently, no matter what, no matter how large the acreage is, or the lot is.
Okay, if I may ask a follow-up question. So I'm thinking in a traditional sense, you typically expect in an ADU, one person, maybe two people maximum, I don't know. But there are some circumstances where there might be a single mom with two kids who needs a little more space. Is that done anywhere where ADUs are allowed, where the accessory dwelling unit is allowed to be slightly larger if the acreage supports it? Or would that go against the intent of an ADU?
I will say, I am open to that discussion as well. So, you know, I think there, you know, I do think that there is something to be said for having things proportional, you know, if you have a smaller lot, and that's where the 800 limit comes in. And actually, that was another area that we kind of debated back and forth. You see the full range in, in laws about accessory dwelling, you know, it's about what should be that, that upper limit. Some folks said shouldn't be greater than 600, some said, "Let's bump it up to 1,000." So we started in the middle, but, and we also said one accessory dwelling unit. But I also think that, you know, the example that you provide makes a very good case for, hey, if the lot is above a certain acreage, we could allow 1,000 feet or 1,200 feet. So I'm, you know, again, I'm open to that discussion, because I think what you describe is very reasonable.
Thank you.
I'm going to go, Ms. Hummer, and then Ms. Litteter.
So, do we have a set definition for what is a short-term rental?
Yes, we do. And actually, I worked on that bill as well. I would have to go back and look, look it up, because it's not in the top of my head. That tab among the 8,000 opened in my brain was closed a little while ago. So I could open that, that mental tab back up and get that definition for you. But yes, we do have a definition, and there's some pretty specific parameters about short-term rentals and, you know, the different requirements that they have to meet, the registration, and, you know, a process with inspections and permits. It's starting to come back to me as I talk about it, but I'll, I'll find that.
And Ms. Miller has it at her fingertips, if you want.
Okay, great. Just, but I, I can look at that, but, and then my next, so discussing this, this proposed amendment, or amendment for discussion, and for which you said, I have to say that I'm unclear on if, for, for either if we're in favor of allowing the ADU for a short-term rental, or we're not in favor. I understand your take on it, that it's, somebody could create one simply for the purpose of a short-term rental, but they may decide later on to make it a longer-term rental that would help our housing, or the next owner could decide to do that. But I think the, what Mr. Volkey brought up for discussion was not having it be allowed to be a short-term rental. So, I definitely agree with not to have it be that the whole property must be rented at one time, because that takes out the owner occupied, but there's still some debate on that, to have that. I know in some more urban areas, it's an issue with short-term rentals, you know, to have that, there was a feeling that that was really limiting housing stock. But if we're looking at the county as a whole, I'm not sure that ADUs overall are going to be built simply for short-term rental. They may be to have, but anyway, I'm just throwing that out there, that I'm not clear on each person's of where we are. We're still discussing what people feel on that.
We're trying to figure it out as we go.
I know, I know, that's kind of, it's kind of going back and forth, so, all right, thank you.
Ms. Litteter?
Thank you. I'm going to try and hit a couple of different things all at once, because it has now stockpiled on me. So, to Ms. Fiedler's and Ms. Rodvian's discussion about the square footage, I'm reading in the bill where it says 800 square feet or 50% of the floor area of the principal single-family detached dwelling. So I'm wondering if that might address the, and there may be one too many assumptions here, but I'm going to throw it out. Presumably, if your lot size is bigger, possibly your home is bigger, and so if you do 50%, if you use that 50%, would that allow... And so, if you do fifty percent, if you use that fifty percent, would that allow you to build a bigger ADU? I don't know if that actually, or is that, or did that fifty percent get taken out?
It's the lesser.
So, it's the, the lesser of, but-
The lesser of.
But if that we were, um, you know, if that were we wanted to consider, if we were wanting to consider, you know, allowing that limit to grow based on the size of the primary dwelling, removing that little phrase would, I think, would accomplish it pretty smoothly and allow for, I think, a proportional, you know, sort of things in proportion.
Right, okay. Um, thank you for the catch.
And real quick on that, isn't that just your, the, the size of the ADU, not the quantity of ADUs?
Right. The, the bill currently limits it to one in all cases, and the size is eight hundred square feet. If we, now, I may be missing something, so please, because there's always things I'm missing when it comes to, um, these topics, because it always seems like there's more than meets the eye. But, um, if you took out the fifty percent of the primary dwelling square footage, or eight hundred, whichever is less, or the lesser of those two, um, you could still end up with some pretty substantial accessory dwelling units. And, I mean, maybe we're comfortable with that.
And then, to the point Ms. Hummer was talking about, the, uh, where, as we try to figure out where we stand on the short-term rental, I think a question that goes through my mind is, what is, what is the intention of the bill? You know, is the intention of the bill to get as many ADU units built as possible? Or is the intention of the bill to help address a housing, uh, you know, shortage, affordable housing shortage in Anarondale County, meaning for our seniors, for our young, for our disabled, for our veterans, those sort of groups? And then, once we have that purpose, our, you know, we've come to a collective, a great, you know, or individual idea of what you, what that purpose is, I think that helps answer the question about whether or not a short-term rental of the ADU should be allowed. Because a, a short-term rental, if we're looking at it from, you know, does that really, does a short-term rental then, does that help address the housing challenges that we're facing in the county, or doesn't a short-term rental? And I think by asking ourselves those questions, we might be able to get to a place where we can decide how we feel about, you know, prohibiting or allowing the short-term rental of a, you know, ADU.
Do you mind if I respond, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is an area where advocates are actually split. So, um, I've had, I had conversation with one group who said, um, which is the, the group that I was working with when I was originally drafting this, um, that recommended prohibiting short-term rentals, for the reason that you said, hey, if we're looking to increase housing, then, um, if we're allowing short-term rentals, are we actually going to create housing, or are we just going to create more short-term rentals? Um, on the other hand, um, a different advocacy group came in and said, actually, allowing short-term rentals may, um, provide short-term rentals in the short run, but ultimately may provide housing in the long run. So, I'm sort of inclined to, um, I, I guess, the way I'm looking at it, especially because I know, well, we also have to be mindful, too, you know, I don't know, uh, what you hear in your districts, but I hear concerns about short-term rentals from time to time, um, about, you know, issues with noise and parking and inappropriate use and things like that. So, um, you know, there, again, this is one of those things where there's, I, I'm inclined to say, take the prohibition of short-term rentals out of the bill and allow them to go forward with the thought that they will eventually, or they can eventually, create housing, because not everyone is going to be willing to, you know, be a host for a short-term rental. It's not necessarily a small job. Or, um, again, I think that testimony that you got from, uh, Ms. Fiedler shared a piece of testimony that she received from one of her constituents with the whole council, where that person mentioned, at times, they wanted us to be able to operate a short-term rental, but then they were, um, their employment sent them overseas for a significant period of time, and then it was valuable for them to have a, a long-term renter in both the main house and the, um, the accessory dwelling unit. So, I, I feel like my instinct says, let's create the housing regardless of how, regardless of the use. But again, very open to, very open to conversation. I don't think there's clear answers, um, on this topic, you know, when you look at what different jurisdictions are doing.
Ms. Pickard?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, going back to the, the size of the accessory dwelling unit, I think it's important to keep in mind that these are accessory dwelling units. We're not wanting to permit a full-fledged additional home on someone's property. So, we need to be careful with size. I don't, I'm not saying eight hundred square feet is the mark, but I, I, I sort of appreciate the way the sponsor has put it in the middle of what's out there in ADU legislation land. And then, I'm, I'm split on the short-term rental, because the short-term rental ADU, if the bill says you have to rent out the whole property, so you're not necessarily using your ADU to provide additional income to afford your very expensive Anarondale County, single-family home. I don't know.
I would actually suggest, if we went with a short-term rental, we should, we would take out that provision. The provision of it has to be rented as an entire property, that we would allow the, um, you know, actually, it could go either way. The, the owner, or I, I guess, I guess if you're not the owner, you would have to get permission from your landlord to rent. I don't know exactly. That's a lot, lot of detail. But let's stick with the owner-occupied, whether they're occupying the primary house or the accessory dwelling, and they wanted to rent out the others, the short-term rental. I think that's what, that's what I would envision if we took out the prohibition on short-term rentals, because technically, it's in here. I mean, we do, I mean, we do allow it if you rent out the entire property. But I think the idea of allowing, um, an owner to rent out whichever piece they're not living in, I think that's kind of what we're looking at. And that's- Mr. Volkey, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what your amendment proposes, right?
I think so. If I understand it.
Now, you see why this bill took me, like, two years.
Before I go, Ms. Fiedler, and I'll tell you what my, when I initially, and you and I spoke about this, uh, last year, during sort of campaigning, talking about ADUs, you know, I envisioned a, uh, a capability for a homeowner to be able to build, and I'll, I'll use my own mother for an example, right? If I had a house and I wanted to build an ADU on the back end of the property, simply because I don't want to live in the same walls as my mom, I want to have some separation there. And, and so, in my mind, I was thinking, well, this would be a, a great tool to be able to build a small, you know, eight hundred square feet, or whatever the size ends up being, uh, on the property. And as we evolved over the last, so that was my original intent, uh, with this legislation and being sort of, uh, sold by it in the beginning, and still am, though it, it'll probably be modified in some form or fashion. But, but then I also see the value of, if, if I decided to leave my primary residence, and my mom was still in the ADU, and I wanted to rent out my primary residence, because, you know, for whatever reason, I would still want my mom to stay in that ADU, and not, because of the owner-occupied, she would then be forced to leave. So, so, so that one, that sort of discussion point, I'm glad we, we spoke about it, kind of like triggered my, my head, like, oh, wow, so I'm, I might create a situation where she's going to be kicked out if I'm not owner-occupied, living in the primary dwelling unit. Uh, so, so, so that's one. The second piece is, um, I, I think, um, I was going to say, Ms. Fiedler, you didn't say it earlier, was, um, Ms. Pickard, I think you said it earlier, about, you know, are we creating, uh, a situation where you have, uh, two, and two family units that just becomes a rental property for a, a landlord that's, that's not even invested in the community, and potentially having conflicts down the road where it just, it's just becoming, I, I don't know. My heart tent, tells me to lean to, you know, staying true to the bill, where, uh, it's, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be owner-occupied. Uh, I'm a fan of the ADU, um, and so I want to support that, that piece of it. But I'm just, I'm kind of talking through the emotional aspect of this, uh, and then trying to understand where this thing will land at. But I wanted to at least verbalize, uh, at least for the rest of the council, uh, to see where I was coming from when this topic even first, uh, came to fruition, so. There you go. If it means, adds any value to the conversation.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, short-term rental, when you're talking about, um, having certain restrictions could prohibit the, the building of ADUs, the, the thought that comes to mind, or, um, example that comes to mind, is that we have a lot, at least in District Five, and probably definitely District Six, of families who do short-term rentals one time a year, and that is for commissioning week. But they also have mom, dad, grandma, who may want to take, um, use of this ADU, and then they're stuck in a position, well, that's an annual income that my family depends on, but my mom needs a place to live. So, I can see where that would become a deterrent for pursuing. But that, having said that, I do understand the concerns of everyone here about turning it into some kind of business, um, model, if you will. Uh, so my question to Ms. Kenny, I know we, we did obviously the short-term rental legislation, um, last session. Would there be anything that would prohibit us from putting certain conditions on short-term rentals that were on properties that had an ADU? Like limitations as far as how many days a year, or something like that?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. No, I think that we could do that right now. Short-term residential rentals are defined as those that are rented for no more than a hundred and twenty consecutive days. So, we could change that definition or play around with the language there, either in these provisions in the zoning code, or in those provisions in the licensing code to restrict the number of days to even fewer for ADUs.
Okay. Not saying that's one I want to pursue, but it's good to know that that's an option we can discuss. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
I'm just trying to think through, like, what a compromise could be, listening to everybody. So, hearing Mr. Smith's concern about, um, you know, a family member still being allowed, who isn't technically the titled owner, but who is still going to live there, I wonder if there's a way we could say, it needs to be either owner or owner's blood relation, family member, something like that. I mean, we could get pretty complicated with how we write it, but there would be a way that you could say, it basically has to be the, uh, somebody who is related to the family member. I don't know if we want to go down that path, but I'm just putting it out there. I think for me personally, I don't like the idea that the whole property could be a short-term rental, but I don't necessarily have a problem with one of the units being a short-term rental, as long as the other one is some kind of a longer-term tenancy, if you will, whether that is a rental, or an owner, or a family member that's living there. So, that's the way I'm looking at it. Um, so I think there's probably some room to keep talking about that. But there were a couple of other points in the bill that I thought were interesting, that I didn't bring amendments forward on. Thinking about subdivisions, so obviously, this is a one-lot prohibition. But if I had a large lot that was zoned, you know, R-five or something, I think you, if you went through some kind of a minor subdivision, you could probably put a number of these on. So, I, I don't know. Is that a concern at all for OPZ, or is that too sort of far-fetched for that to happen? Like, do we think that's anything that people would do? Would they be smart enough to figure out, I can do this? And would it be cost-effective? I understand. But then each of those houses could have its own ADU, because there's an, there's a one-lot per ADU limit. So- You'd have to have a big house. Yes, you have, absolutely. You'd have to have a big house, and then you'd have a little house. But then you wind up going from one house on an R-five to ten houses on an R-five, that same lot, you know, like that. With, I don't know, maybe that's too attenuated. I, I'm not sure. But that's something that just triggered for me in this conversation, because of the one-lot piece.
I, I, I'll, I'll let Lynn take, take the OPZ point on that. I think that's a little bit of a stretch, but I, I also want to go back-
You know, I'm always going there.
Yeah, but I, I also have, um, just a quick flag to throw on, uh, the relation idea.
Oh, you don't like that?
I don't know if we want to get the, um, uh, county government involved in tracing family trees.
We'll be checking birth certificates.
I'll just add to that, that I, I think generally, if a property owner has a parcel, um, that has subdivision potential because of the allowance in the zoning code and the acreage, then generally, they are going to eventually subdivide it into lots. And it, it's hard to imagine that we would see more subdivisions, just because people want to create more ADUs. I mean, they're, and they're going to subdivide where there is subdivision potential. Then beyond that, which of those new lots might want to add an ADU? You know, that's, you know, not something we can predict.
Okay.
Ms. Hummer?
Um, yes, I wanted to point out another thing that helps if we allow short-term rentals. This is, part of the intent of this is to increase housing in the community, but also to help people to stay in their housing. And as things go up and as people age, they may not, a short-term rental that they were able to have in an ADU may allow them to stay in their home that they couldn't before. So, that's another plus that comes along with it. And I'll, I'll agree with, um, Mr. Barron, that I don't think we want to get into family trees. But also, in today's, um, society, families are much broader than blood relatives and have others. And so, there could be many different ways that the person who's staying in that ADU, um, could be there. But, you know, to have the potential, like Mr. Smith said, we live in a highly mobile area, especially with the military, and so someone who's deployed away, they want to rent out their main home while they're gone, but keep their mother-in-law, or their stepson, or whoever, living in the, um, in the ADU. So, to have that mobility, um, there. I do, um, that there's some concern about, and eight hundred may not be the exact amount, but if we get too big, we're looking at another house on a property. And we have in here, too, that there, it's not going to be development fees or anything. So, if we're looking at another full-size house being built, we're, we're kind of missing some things on there to consider. And, um, you know, commissioning week, I also, I lived in Augusta, Georgia for a while, and everyone in Augusta who had a big house rented their house out for Masters Week. And that was the one week, they had it in the code, that everybody could have that week to have their house. And so, I think we want to keep that in place for the, for the big houses around, um, the Annapolis area. So, I think, um, so that's just my additional thoughts. Thanks.
I'm going to go to Ms. Raviyan, but, uh, real quick, uh, Mr. Volkey, if, if I had an ADU, I consider you like my brother, you know? And so, I would be okay with you staying there, even though we're not, you know, have blood relatives. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Ms. Raviyan.
It's not in his district, sir.
Yeah, I feel, I feel similarly.
It's a short-term rental.
About that, I think, I don't want to, you know, beat it to death, but I have two brothers that I have no legal relationship with. So, it's very, you know, to me, they're brothers, and nobody can tell me otherwise. But if someone looked at it from a, you know, a legal perspective, they would disagree. But anyway, I actually wanted to go back to the point of eight hundred square feet. There was a time that eight hundred square feet, um, was considered a house, like, that was considered a home. And over time, homes have just gotten larger. So, um, you know, if you made it square, I used my handy calculator to take the square root of eight hundred, and that would be twenty feet, twenty-eight by about, say, twenty-eight and a quarter feet, um, square. So, that's, I mean, I've lived in apartments smaller than that with a roommate. So, I mean, to me, that's still pretty significant. So, you can, you know, you could fit, I think you could fit a mom and two kids in there comfortably. In fact, I think there would probably be a lot of folks that would be thrilled to have that space, compared to at least, I'm thinking of some of the, you know, apartment sizes in Annapolis, because things are getting so dense, that that would be a great option. So, again, I'm flexible. I'm, I, I really appreciate this conversation, because I think so many, so many of those things really should be kind of personalized to what are the needs of our jurisdiction? What are the needs to, you know, we've talked about tourism, like tourism is a big piece of our economy here. So, talking about short-term rentals, you know, is a way that could allow people to stay in their home. The price of housing, you know, oh, my goodness, I look around and see new homes being built for, I mean, six, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how anyone can afford that mortgage, but they're, they are, and they do. So, if there, you know, are ways to help them make that more affordable and create housing. Anyway, that's all to say, eight hundred, not as small as you think, and I appreciate all this discussion.
Ms. Fiedler, and then?
Thank you. I'm actually going to pick up on something that Mr. Volkey touched on, although a different scenario, because I don't think it's such a crazy, um, thought. I don't see anywhere in the legislation where it says existing primary structure. My thought is, again, this is from Mr. Volkey's comments, is you have an undeveloped, uh, area of land. Each, it, each property, um, created through the development process, um, is an acre, it's an R-one. We hear all the time, or at least I hear all the time, from people looking for homes that are large enough to have grandma in the basement, or someone in the basement, or wherever. Would there be, would this allow for a new development to be built with an accessory dwelling unit already on the property?
Yes.
Is that something that, that was discussed? Is that the hope in, in the process?
I mean, I think that's something that the market will determine. You know, if people want homes with ADUs, I think the builders were, will be happy to build them.
Okay. I just wanted to understand what the potential was, and if that was the intent.
It just, I, I, I am no expert. I have not seen many other jurisdictions that have this, where you have, um, new construction with automatic ADUs.
where you have new construction with automatic ADUs, but maybe they exist somewhere. I think, like Councilwoman Rodvian stated, that the market would decide. If I was, I might not want to pay the premium for a house if I don't want somebody that close to me, or I might, so. But I don't know if that's something that we've seen in other parts of the country. I've never heard of it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. LeBitter?
Interesting that we started talking about the market. That's a point I wanted to make when we're discussing, you know, the rentability or the ability of someone to rent the primary home or the ADU and what's short-term and what's long-term. To some extent, the market is going to have a role to play in here. I'm putting my, I know my family, we have been renters, we have been owners, and we have been landlords. And I can say for me personally, and this is where the market comes into play, I'm probably thinking twice. If there's someone with a short-term, a piece of property and there's a short-term rental in my backyard, I'm probably not going to personally be interested in moving my family in to the main house on a long-term lease. It's not something I'm looking for for my particular family. A different family might make a different choice, but to some extent, I think the market may have a role to play in that as to what, what actually happens in practice, you know, once this law were to go into place. We may be, we may find that though we allow that to happen, that in, in practice, it's not what people want. And so that will dictate, you know, the decisions that people are making, how to use their property.
Mr. Volkey? Yes, this is my concern, right? This idea that you're going to build up, so we're going to start advertising, and you're going to get the house in the front, which is the main house, and then you're going to get the ADU with no development fees. And that's going to be a new product type that's offered. And maybe that happens out of the market because you are effectively getting sort of a two-for-one on that. You're getting the primary structure and then you're getting the ADU, but the ADU doesn't have any fees associated with it. So I don't know. There's, there's an interesting concept there that if somebody's smart enough to figure out this situation and finds a way to, you know, build that product and make money off of it, we could be creating something that we didn't anticipate. So it's just something to think about. The other piece of this that I noted was Section 9 on Page 4 where it talks about, for lack of a better term, I'm going to again call this a grandfathering clause, but it takes things that don't exist at really present, well, I guess they do, but not many of them, at least allegedly, these ADUs, and says that they aren't subject to the requirements of this bill specifically on square footage, the separate entrance, the street designation, and then the short-term rental piece of it. So I guess the question I would have is, what is the thought process there? Because if we're, if we have ADUs, if they're not complying with these particular provisions, do we want to suggest that people do comply with these provisions? Like, are these provisions good enough that we would want to bring them forward and make these things if they have to do? Or do we just sort of say, the rules are what they were for you before, and we're going to completely grandfather that? I don't know. That's, I didn't bring an amendment on that, but that was something else that struck me.
My parents, growing up, had two, I guess we'd call them Fonzie flats in the back that they rented. And later, the city passed that you couldn't build those anymore, but they were grandfathered in. And it was important for the folks like my parents who bought a place like that, that it was grandfathered in, because many of them bought those houses counting in the income that they would have. So if we, if they'd have been retrochanged, many of those people wouldn't be able to afford the homes they had to have it come in. And so, you know, I'm, as long as the accessory dwelling unit is safe and has in there, I don't have an issue with grandfathering in because I think that many people make their housing choices based on that income that they were able to add in. Or the fact that I bought this because I've had an ADU that my mother could live with us or something like that. And if we change that, we're kind of, we could be creating housing problems that we were trying to fix.
More lights. I'm not sure who you turned on first there.
Quick question for Office of Law. So Councilman Volkey, I think, raised a good point about you could envision a developer sort of capitalizing on the fact that we're exempting impact fees if they were going to build a new subdivision and have a, an ADU along with each, you know, with each new primary home. Would our current law allow, would that fall under this law? If a, if a developer were going to develop, say, a neighborhood where probably wouldn't, I can't imagine that they would want every home to have an ADU because not, like you said, not everyone wants that. But if on the homes that, yeah. The option maybe that the, you know, the.
Like an upgrade you can choose.
Right, you can choose, you know, you choose the granite countertops, you choose the ADU. But if it were new construction, would this provision apply, in the way you read it, to new construction? Or would this only be to someone adding a separate ADU or detached?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I think the way that it is written, it would apply in that way because it is an allowable use. So it doesn't speak to it being an existing dwelling there and an ADU being added. So I think it would allow a developer to potentially go down that, that road and construct, subdivide, and then construct a principal dwelling and an ADU on each lot if they so chose.
And in that case, the ADU, the developer would not be paying impact fees?
Right, because this bill exempts those from impact fees.
That is an amendment I am totally willing to add because I think if we're talking about new development, you know, we're sort of looking at things from a different angle. So I feel like, I don't know, again, I don't know what my colleagues think about that, but I feel, I feel a little more comfortable requiring the impact fees if the ADU is constructed at the same time as the primary house, as opposed to like a later addition, which is kind of what I'm envisioning for the most part. But you're absolutely right, forward-thinking would be, you know, developers may want to have both at the same time.
Ms. LeBitter?
What I'm about to ask, I think, is even more relevant in light of that when we're talking about new development. Based on the research that you have done for this bill, can you just speak briefly to the impact that other areas who have gone before us, having more ADUs has had specifically on school capacity and school attendance? I know, I imagine that that could be a concern from some in our communities, that if we have suddenly this massive influx of ADUs, particularly if they're built at the same time as new development, how does that, you know, potentially impact the number of kids attending our schools? So if you have any research on, you know, the, the types of folks who are typically living in these and?
I will take a look to see if I can find anything concrete, but, you know, a lot of times you only have adults living in the ADU. And if you have an adult with children, they're very likely children that are already living in the community, maybe in, you know, an overcrowded home, and now they have a, you know, a separate space for themselves. So I don't think it really has an impact on school capacity. I definitely understand that concern. But I think also the rate of development of ADUs is so slow. You know, if we come back any, a year from the implementation and we have, you know, even one in every neighborhood in the county, I would be shocked.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Well, if we're looking at 800 square feet apartments, one-bedroom and studio apartments are already exempt from the school APF, so I would view this as the same. I wouldn't let school APF or the school test get in the way of an ADU. When we talk about a new subdivision going in, I mean, I know for someone who's looking for more flexibility in how subdivisions get created, if one of the options is to, is to automatically put a new ADU in the back, I mean, impact fees are already pretty high. So I don't know that putting a bathroom, you know, off your, I don't know that, I don't know that, I don't know that there's something to charge. You're already building a new home with impact fees. I don't know that an 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit is going to change the financial dynamic there. Happy to talk about that, but I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves with getting into impact fees. I don't know if anybody at the table has anything to add about that, but.
Not at the moment, but we'll, we'll be looking into it.
I'm actually grateful for this discussion we had today because it opened up a lot of threads that I don't think was really considered. And so looking forward to see how this thing evolves. Ultimately, I'm still excited about ADUs, how it's implemented. Obviously, we'll go through the sausage-making process, but looking forward to, military term there, probably shouldn't use that. But certainly looking forward to this being an option for homeowners in the future to be able to capitalize on. So any additional questions on ADUs at this moment? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll transition to Bill Number 723.
Okay, good morning again. Hannah Dyer, Director of Fiscal Affairs for Bill 723. I have several people at the table with me now. From Personnel, Jaclyn Rikers Atkinson and Sarah Heffernan. From Budget, Stephen Teroux. From the Police Department, Captain Jeff Adams. From Detention, Pat Moore. From Finance, Billy Penley. And from Law, I think it's, yeah, Greg Swain, not Kelly Kenny. And Bill 723 makes changes to the positions authorized for this year in certain county departments. There's one change in the Office of Law to fulfill IT needs. In the Police Department, there are two changes to fulfill administrative support needs. In the Department of Detention Facilities, there's one change to fulfill compliance and training needs. In the Office of Finance, there's one change to fulfill ambulance billing needs. And as I said earlier, we have representatives from each affected department that can answer in more detail any questions you have about these changes. And I just also want to note that some of these changes do result in wider salary ranges for the position classifications authorized. So when the positions are filled, we do expect that there would be some fiscal impact associated with filling that position compared to at the current classification level. But there would be some delay, of course, in hiring because of the notice and hiring process that has to occur. It wouldn't be immediate. So with that, we can answer any questions you have.
Well, we'd like to say that I am glad that within each of the departments, I do this in my civilian job or my non-political job, that you guys sort of did some internal churning there, provided offsets before you asked for additional positions. And so that was the first thing I looked at to see, was it just a net increase or did they provide some sort of offset to compensate for it? So I do appreciate that, but that's all the questions I have. Easy. No, no comments. Well, appreciate the opportunity to speak about 723 then. Next, we'll discuss Bill Number 823.
All right. So Bill 823 creates new classifications of positions and makes some changes to pay and minimum qualifications to certain positions, and modifies the number of positions approved within the classified service. Specifically, the bill changes the title of the existing Park Ranger classification to Park Ranger 1 and creates a Park Ranger 2 classification to allow a track for advancement. And the 22 current Park Rangers approved in the budget are reclassified as Park Ranger 1s. This bill does not create any Park Ranger 2 positions, just the classification. The bill would also increase the pay grade for the Police Fleet Coordinator position from NR 13 to NR 15, which has a relatively small fiscal impact that can be absorbed in the department's existing appropriation. So I have several people, again, with me at the table. From Personnel, still Jaclyn Rikers Atkinson and Sarah Heffernan. From Budget, still Mr. Stephen Teroux. From Wrecker Parks, we have Jessica Lays and Chris Carroll. From the Police Department, Captain Jeff Adams. And from Law, Greg Swain, I think. Okay, in the back there. So we can answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, so just for the benefit, since you did come down to the work session, you wanted, does somebody just want to take a turn at, what are we doing here? What is, what are the position controls we're changing, just for the, for the sake?
I appreciate that. Jessica Lays, Wrecker Parks. So the Park Ranger series that's being created is part of a proficiency advancement. We have park rangers that come in and work for the county for like 30 years, and they only have one classification. So this provides an opportunity through longevity and training to move from a Park Ranger 1 to a Park Ranger 2.
I'm just confirming, so you're not actually moving anybody to Park Ranger 2 at this point? You might do that in Budget, but right now, everybody's staying the same. They're just under a new name.
So we'll create this series, but there's no vegetarian impact because we'll take a look at our existing 22 positions and make a decision on where the threshold is in FY '24.
Seeing no other questions, thank you for the information on Bill 823. Next, we'll review Bill Number 923.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As is the counsel. 923 extends the sunset that was put in place by Bill 8521 for certain adequate, school adequate public facilities provisions. This extends the sunset to September 1st, 2023. So it's not a long extension at all. This, I think, we had a discussion, and I'm blanking on the bill number, but we had a discussion a few weeks back about the school chart. This is in that same vein as, just deals with different provisions of the adequate public facilities law. So what the current scheme under 8521, this would keep that, those rules in place while the administration works with all of you to bring forward potential adequate public facilities ordinance changes as well as the school chart piece of it that we discussed. So we ask that you extend this sunset, give us the time to complete it so that we don't go seesawing back and forth between rules. That's the rationale for this bill. And just pointing out again, the sunset would have us at September of this year. So it's, it's not a long extension.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my colleagues, while it's, to me, it's frustrating that we're here with this, the need for this sunset extension, I do think, since we don't have, since 923 isn't a brand-new bill, I think creating, I'm really frustrated that this is the bill that's here today and not a full-on reform to the chart, to the school chart and the school APF. But it is a complicated topic that we need to get right. And I do think inserting, if everything sunset May 1st, and we had a window of time in between, it would cause a little confusion. And so I haven't actually decided how I'm going to vote on this bill, but just because I'm, I've worked really hard on school APF, and I really do wish 923 was a new, a new school APF bill, but it's not. We're not there yet, and we have a lot of work to do. And there's been some transition. We have work to do with the school system. There's been a transition in leadership there. And we have new leaders within certain county departments. So we're, we're just, that's where I am on 923. But I suspect that this council will want to pass this bill so we don't end up with a moment in time, a month or 45 days or 90 days where we create chaos in the code.
The administration is well aware of frustration.
Mr. Volkey and Ms. LeBitter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess my question is this, this has been a long time coming to try to get the APF thing fixed, the school APF fixed. That's what I mean by the APF thing. Is this enough time? Like, are you positive you're going to be able to get a bill down by theoretically, you're going to have to be first meeting, I guess, in June? No, you're going to really have to be the end of June because with the August recess, I don't think we're going to meet before September the 1st. So that's going to take the entirety of July out for intro, which means you got to have it in by June. We're running into budget. Like, I'm just wondering, is this date enough? Like, I hear my colleagues' frustration. I share it. I think everybody on the council shares it. I think the admin shares it. There's plenty of frustration to go around, but practically speaking, are we going to have to kick this can down the road again?
Our hope is that we don't. I think it was balancing the date, right? So it is up to the council if you, if you want to kick it a little bit further. We would, though, I think, sharing the frustration of Councilwoman Pickard, we wouldn't want to extend this, say, to September of 2024, which would just drag this out even longer. I think the school APF work group had met, or has met for about a little over two years now. There is a massive volume of data. There has been a massive volume of work that has been done. We're close to start shopping concepts.
Ms. Libiter.
Thank you, Chair. For the benefit of those at home, building off of what Ms. Pickard was mentioning about the chaos, if there was a gap, if you could just articulate, for those who might be listening at home, who think that a gap would be a great way to put pressure, to make sure something got done, could you speak to, just give some tangible examples of what that, the chaos and why a gap would be a bad decision?
Sure. Happy to give it a shot, but I'm probably going to turn it over to Ms. Kenny for the facts. But this bill, or the bill that we're extending dealt with some of the minor subdivision rules. It dealt with some of the capacity limits, so it could cause a seesaw. In fact, I'll let Ms. Kenny articulate exactly where it is.
Sure. Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. If it was to go back and forth, a development might be underway, under review, under one school chart and one capacity basis, and then it would go back to a different percentage, which would mean it could be open, it could be closed, so there would be a lot of back and forth. There's other, some other restrictions about when school APF does and does not apply that changes back and forth, depending on the, on the bills. So it would kind of leave everybody in limbo in a questionable situation.
Awesome. Thank you for clarifying for those at home.
Sure.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I would strongly advise this council not to extend the extension. I think the September 1st puts an adequate amount of pressure to do this work. We are ready. We've analyzed the data. We need to present the data in a way that's understandable. It is a complicated topic, and there are a lot of misunderstandings as regard to, in regard to school APF out there. So I'd like to, I mean, if we're going to sunset it, let's at least keep it at September 1st. Otherwise, we're going to have this, I can't think about this anymore. I dream about school APF and student school, and you think I'm teasing. We have to finish this. We have to get this done for many reasons. So I would like to keep it at September 1st and keep the pressure on to bring a bill forward in the next couple of months. I know the administration is, will be ready to stop hearing from me on a pretty much daily basis about it. So let's keep it at September, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Kenny, I just want to go back to something that you said for clarification. If we were to go back to law prior to this bill, I think it would only open schools that are currently closed because of that 95% threshold going to 100%.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, that's right. It does, it would change from 95%, it's 85% now, it would go back to 95%.
So schools that, that we have recently closed would then become open?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Seeing none, concludes the conversation on Bill Number 923. Next up, Bill Number 1023.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bringing to the table, coming to the table with me for 1023 is Mr. Michelson from DPW and the Director of our Watership Protection Bureau and our Environmental Policy Advisor. We have Mr. Padami from IMP. Ms. Miller sticking with us from OPZ, and same thing with Ms. Kelly Kenny. 1023 makes changes under Article 16 of our county code to define water quality improvement projects and exempt them under certain conditions from the modification process for disturbance of natural features. The currently water quality improvement projects such as stream and wetland restoration and outfall restoration work, which necessarily take place in locations where they may temporarily impact environmental resources, require environmental modifications from county agencies in order to receive these permits. While these modifications are routinely granted because the work is considered self-mitigating, but the preparation of all the modification requests adds significant cost and time to these projects. The exemptions in 1023 will recognize the environmental benefits associated with these projects, expedite their implementation, reduce costs, reduce the permit burden, review burden on county staff. Happy to answer any questions, and we'll ask you to move this bill. I think we're talking about this one on March 6th.
So my question, just in plain language, essentially what we're doing is allowing all the stormwater remediation projects to be exempt from permitting, sort of the process that normal construction processes go through?
Let Ms. Michelson. Yeah. Eric Michelson, Department of Public Works. No, it does not exempt them completely from the permitting process. We still have state and federal permits from MDE and Army Corps that we need to get, and we'd still go through the conventional grading permit process in terms of getting approvals from inspection, I mean, from inspections and permits. This is simply for the environmental modification piece, which was put presumably into the code at some point, because environmental modifications would be granted for development activity where there are permanent impacts to wetlands, buffers, streams, buffers. Our work is considered to be, the work that groups like us are doing is considered to be temporary impacts that are self-mitigating. And so, like I say, or like Pete has said, they are generally approved, but they lengthen the time horizon and they create a paperwork exercise that we need to go through that lengthens the process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. I was going to ask a similar question to the chair, so appreciate that. You did say something, though, that triggered me in there. You said they're generally approved. Have there ever been instances where you have not been approved for one of these projects?
As of recently, the past several years, I can't recall a case of them not having been approved.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. So just to clarify, it's not the project that is yes or no, it's the modification. And the modification would be taken care of in the process of the larger project? Am I understanding that?
So the modification, the, these types of projects, whether they're done by the county or by a nonprofit organization or that sort of thing, would be completely exempted from the environmental modifications review, but not the larger permit review in terms of county, state, and federal permits for other elements?
Okay. Maybe it would help to give an example of a modification that you've requested before that has been generally approved?
Sure. So stream impacts, stream buffers, wetlands, wetland buffers, steep slopes, those kinds of things all require environmental modifications. And like I say, they're all routinely granted as a condition of this process, but it becomes sort of a hoop to jump through and a paperwork exercise that we're having to go through and that other agency staff are having to review and eventually grant those modifications. Sure.
Definitely appreciate, but I didn't realize, and today's the first day that I have come to this conclusion, is that environmental sort of speak is a separate language, foreign language. And I'll work on my fluency when it comes to it. So, thank you.
Yeah. Happy to try to translate whenever I can.
Any additional questions on Bill 1023?
I just want to, like, see if I can summarize in, like, really, really low-level terms. You're trying to do something good. You have to do something a little bit bad, but to achieve the thing that's good, but in the end, the good will totally overcome the little bad thing.
I think that's a pretty good way to summarize it.
I teach middle school.
We're going to have to amend the legislation.
So you speak marine language? That's what I, middle school. All right, 1023. Okay. Well, thank you all for the input on 1023. Next up is Bill Number 1123. Ms. Hammer.
So this is a bill, currently, our mixed-use zoning is created to encourage a variety of businesses in our mixed-use areas between residential and commercial. And this is just making a couple of small changes to the classifications, the categories for certain businesses. Mailing and shipping services would be changed from retail and service category to industrial opticians and, I can't say it, optometrical establishments would change from retail and service to an office. Veterinary clinics would also change from retail and service to office space. And so that's the main point of this, just to allow some more, to better, to more accurately describe what these businesses do in the commercial settings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just for clarification, this only applies in mixed-use districts?
Correct. This is only mixed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to add, appreciate the sponsors working with the administration, letting us take a peek at it in advance, provide comments. We're supportive.
Awesome. You know, it's the value of the legislative branch and council members in general. And this is one of those pieces of legislation where oftentimes, if you are a business owner or a citizen, you just don't know the system. And as they are progressing through their efforts to either build something or do something great, they hit a wall. And then this is where we come in, and we try to mitigate the impacts of those walls when it comes to these establishments that are really trying to help our economy, help our county. And so I'm just, I'm grateful to be in a position and to see legislation like this that is answering the mail for citizens who want to do good. So thank you for delivering it.
Exactly. It's just one that, you know, that was brought to my attention. It was a barrier that, you know, we didn't realize was there. And this is just a way we can remove that barrier and provide more opportunities for small businesses.
Appreciate it. Any additional questions on 1123? All right. Thank you all for, the administration for coming down. Happy Valentine's Day. We will, the seven of us, we are in love with this county, and so they, this county is our Valentine's Day partner. So thank you all, but this meeting is adjourned.
And we'll see you on Fat Tuesday.
Yeah.